Okay, good evening. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I don't believe there's any emergency modifications to the agenda?
No.
Okay, I'll need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed. Any public comments from our one person? Okay, we're gonna move into tonight's topic.
So you want to wait until Kevin walks in the door?
I guess we could. I'll take the moment to say, several of us were just at the OEF grant program where they were announcing their grants for next year. And very exciting, and I don't know what we would do. Speaking of budget numbers, right? I mean, there's so many exciting things that they are funding. And we appreciate them.
At a clip of about 100,000 a year, give or take.
Yeah.
Big money for a small district.
We're just about to be, we've already pledged and...
As a result of my conversion to a new religion, I couldn't have pledged anyway.
Be careful, be careful. Okay, so we had two previous budget study sessions. One about personnel. And the second one was everything else, which was books and utilities and water and maintenance and all sorts of things. So what we're hoping to do tonight is kind of talk about things that we saw during those previous discussions that maybe we felt like, boy, that's a lot of money for a district this size to be spending. Is there anything we can do to help that, bring that number lower? Or maybe you saw something that, wow, we're not funding that program enough. I really wish we were able to fund that program more. And it's not, tonight isn't a, next year, we're not setting next year's budget. That happens in early June. But I think what we're, I'm hoping that we'll be doing is sort of setting the stage for Andy to begin looking at where we might be hoping we can push this budget. And I gave you all example of, you know, we all talked about electricity and how expensive that is. And so an idea coming from Andy and the board really being excited about is a solar, looking into solar. So I'm wondering if there's anything besides solar that we could talk about. Does anyone want to begin? Shall we?
Didn't I tell you you gave us a tall order on the way in?
Yes.
I have, I'm very curious to hear how everybody else came to this because I felt like we have really shrunk a lot in the last several years. So I'm not sure why the savings are. And I have some ideas, but I'm not entirely convinced they're cost-saving. So I'm gonna defer to other people for now and I'll bring up some of these ideas as they come up.
Well, and I think that's one of the, initially, we were like, this is one of the things we were hoping to look at for the budget, was to say, where can we find excitement and build excitement and do things that maybe doesn't cost money? I mean, maybe we can't make changes because our budget is tight. But maybe in this process, we start flowing ideas. And I think it's very important, and Kevin, I think you have said this from the beginning of your, you know, since you've served on the board, is there's nothing wrong with ideas. You know, let's get ideas out there and we can say, oh, it's not a very good idea. But I thought it was a good idea when I was home thinking about it. And I think that's, that's what we're hoping, we were hoping to get more public input too. Here's, here's something I wish we could do. And as you get that, you get that bubbling and you get more participation and you can go somewhere. But we haven't had that from the public, so we haven't from...
We have to generate it ourselves. Well, I can tell you some of the things. I was curious when you said solar in your email to us, along those lines. I, and I know very little about it, but I wondered what water reclamation at Nordoff could look like as we're putting new roofs on. Is there some way to, to look at that? Most of my thoughts were, well, no, that's not true. I shouldn't say what they were with Nordoff. But one of the things that I keep mulling this in my head, and I brought it up, is, and there's actually, right now, a senate bill going forward about school start times.
I saw that.
Did you see that?
I did.
And in my head, as I'm thinking about junior high and high school start times, if we were able to move it to 8:30 as this bill is put in forth, what could that look like for our transportation? Does that hour buy us, and with all the things that the city's talking about doing with bicycle transportation, could that buy us time in the morning that the kids could get to school by bicycle? I know Upper Ojai, that's gonna be quite difficult. There's gonna be issues with that. But what would that look like? Can we save on transportation costs if we move school start times later?
Transportation was actually one of the things that I had thought I'd like to look into in more depth. You know, it's a, it's an expensive item. There's not, what's, do you have an idea, Andy, over the percentage of our students that use the buses?
We average about 15%. So again, on a base of 2,500, going each, actually, instead of, I've got the recent numbers I just received, I'll give them to you exactly.
Are they broken out by school?
By school, yes, they are. So total ridership is 271. So I said 15, probably closer to 13, but that includes AM and PM. So that's a duplicate count compared to, you know, unduplicated. So...
Two, what was the number? I'm sorry?
It is 271. So that would be, and this is all Gen Ed, special ed's pulled out from these numbers. So just for Gen Ed, we have 40 students traveling to Nordoff in the morning. No students who receive transportation home from Nordoff. We did no home transport for Gen Ed. Matilahaw, we have 43 in the morning. We have 81 in the afternoon. And 31 of those are on the courtesy run we do to Myers Oaks. Technically, it's within the walking boundaries from Matilahaw to Myers Oaks, but we, we offer that anyway. San Antonio has four in the morning, nine in the afternoon. Topa has 16 in the morning, 18 in the afternoon. Myers Oaks is three in the morning, six in the afternoon. Miramani is 21 in the morning, 28 in the afternoon. Chaparral's two in the morning and no one in the afternoon. So...
So Topa out of 400 kids?
Out of 400 students. And, and Topa, when we've looked at the, looked at the surveys that the second and fifth grade took last year, Topa certainly does have the highest personal vehicle ridership of any of the schools.
And you know that just by driving there.
Worse than San Antonio?
That statement was actually more focused on the larger three campuses. As a percent of number of students, I would imagine not, but I don't know that certainty.
Now, I know that at one of our meetings about the 7/11, one of the San Antonio parents said, the reason they don't take the bus is because it's too early. I mean, she can get an extra half hour.
From Summit, down to San Antonio.
You know, or even just from the East End. It's just, you know, because the bus also go, I think that's the one that goes to Matilahaw and Nordoff.
Yes, that's correct.
So, you know, she, instead of her children, her children's schools at 7:41 at San Antonio, and she, it drops them off at like 7:15.
Yeah, that's correct.
She's like, they get an extra half hour of sleep if I drive them to school. So...
Have we looked into coordinating with the trolley on any of the student riderships or the routes? Or had a conversation about what kids might want to take the trolley?
A lot of kids take the trolley.
A lot do?
At Nordoff, they do.
Yeah, so that would be interesting to know. You know, is there a way that we could tweak something just a little bit and make it more efficient both ways or not?
Right, because I felt, I know there was a time where the trolley financially for the district was, I mean, for the city was an issue. And they cut back and they cut, you know, so it's like, well, maybe, maybe. And how would we begin that conversation?
For the city?
Yeah.
Pick up the phone?
Yeah, I could get see you, Paul.
I think it'd be good to have something specific to ask them.
Well, maybe what we could specifically ask is, what are the routes? What is, what's the time?
Well, that's on their website.
Yeah, I haven't personally spoken to anyone at the city regarding transportation, but I know Cindy knows it quite well. And she was sharing with me recently that they actually do have an additional run in the morning to pick up and drop off from some of our school sites. So they already have actually adjusted to Meyer Singh. They've adjusted their route schedule to help accommodate the schools.
So have we done the same? Have we adjusted our routes to maximize coverage at the least amount of driving for both sides?
So we did, I do not believe that we factored in the city's routes to our own. We did, when I, actually, the purchase came before I started and then it was worked on a year and a half ago to put in all of the student residences where we have student pickups. And we actually did plot out what's the most efficient route across the valley with the, you know, most efficient number of stops and how do we get to each of those stops? And so we used that software. The software spit out pretty much the exact same thing that Cindy Sloan already knew and had us driving. And so we immediately, yeah, we immediately canceled that service because we realized there was very little value add. But, but we did do that work to identify what the most efficient routes were. And where we used to have, you know, on one street, a pickup at the end of the street and they'd go in and pick up at the end of the cul-de-sac and come back out and one street later stop and do another pickup, we have consolidated some of those pickups over the past couple of years.
And maybe awareness is part of it. I, I mean, maybe there are students who don't take the trolley who could, but they don't know.
Well, it'll cost them a dollar a day each way to take it. So it's financially...
But it might be, some people might be willing to do that rather than drive themselves.
Right.
Well, no, that's why I would like to talk to the city. I mean, what, if we could work out a, you know, if they have student, I know Nordoff has student IDs, but...
Matilahaw does.
Yeah.
Elementary schools, I don't know. Do they?
We have student IDs.
But kids have ID cards?
Yeah.
But they would if they knew that's how they got them.
Get that, a picture.
With a picture?
Topa, Topa.
Okay.
That's a student ID.
Yeah. Right, right. I mean, it's, you know, maybe it's a quarter a day and the district pays it or something, you know?
Well, I, you know, I know they do that like at Santa Cruz where you, part of your tuition at UC Santa Cruz goes to bus fees and you get on the city bus for free with your student ID. We had, I don't know if that's the solution, if that's cost-effective, but...
Well, if it, if it allows us to cut back on the services that we provide, right? And we, it may be share, assuming that it all exists, we could share some of that savings with the city.
I think though, that, I think it's a worthwhile thing to explore at the junior high and high school level. I would have a hard time believing that a parent is gonna stick their five-year-old on a trolley to send him to elementary school. Perhaps I'm wrong.
Hello, once again, the elementaries as far as ridership, four at San Antonio, three at Myers Oaks, nothing at Summit. Miramani's 21 and Topa's 16. So the ridership at the elementary level is low though. I agree, I would have a tough time a year and a half from now having Chris on my trolley.
But there's fifth and sixth grade and that's a lot different from kindergarten.
If they had music, that thing would...
But the routes are limited. For instance, it doesn't go to San Antonio, right? And the neighborhood of Myers Oaks, it wouldn't provide trans, it wouldn't work in Myers Oaks. But there's only three students to take the bus. It's a lot of work and a lot of expense, you know? And again, maybe it's about community-wide working on a network of, you know, like I, when my kids were younger, there was a woman who lived down the street who went to work, she had to leave at 7:30, school didn't start till 8:15, while her son came to our house. 10 minutes, I mean, he spent 10 minutes at my house every morning and then we all walked to school together. So, you know, helping families do that. I mean, maybe we create something where it's even a buddy, you have a fifth or sixth grader who helps, you know, helps younger kids. I know they did, I don't know how that bike ride thing went, the bike train. You know, maybe there's some kind of a buddy system that can be, I mean, if it saves the district, I don't know what, I was trying to see what exactly our transportation budget is.
Non-special ed transportation.
You know, along those lines though, do we do anything to facilitate carpooling? Do we have like a carpool registry or anything like that? Because the more, number one, you know, I see the, I see the traffic at Topa because they're on Mercer. It's a lot, right? And carpooling is good for everybody. And it could be rotated among parents who are all driving every day now, potentially. If there was some way for people to, you know, make it known or, I know we've done it at companies, right? I mean, you're required by the county often to do sort of a list of who's where and stuff. They do, you know, they do zip code matching. Yeah, zip code matching. But I don't know. I mean, reducing the demand on the buses would be one way of, you know, cutting back on the use. And if you're only talking to a few people at the elementary level, it wouldn't take much, frankly, to...
I wonder what, what holds people back from letting their kids ride or walk to school? I know what it is for me. One of those people on that, that's my kid. So I would be hurting without the bus. However, if I had a crossing guard on Main Street, a crossing guard at Grand, I wonder if we'd get a whole lot more families who would feel safe sending their kid.
Yeah, I would, I wouldn't want to see a crossing the streets. That's awful.
Yeah. We are one mile away from the school, but I won't let my kid walk. That's, it's awful. I don't like that I live that close and can't do it. I don't know about the other schools, what the impediments are, but I wonder if there are ways to alleviate that that aren't buses, that are quite costly.
Uber.
Uber. I could start a whole new industry now.
Follow-up on the cost for non-special ed transportation is about a quarter million a year.
Andy, can you put it in any legal perspective? What are our obligations for general versus special transportation?
Right, so if a student's IEP identifies need for transportation, then there's varying levels of whether or not we can actually, we're required to pick them up at their house versus whether or not we can have a centralized location, a bus stop in the neighborhood that they could be picked up at. But special education absolutely still required to provide transportation as far as FAP. And again, with varying levels of what that means. General education, there is no requirement. To my knowledge, the only district in the county that I can recall off the top of my head that's currently not providing Gen Ed transportation is Simi Valley. Simi Valley, a little different for a number of reasons. One is that they do have far more of their students attending their own neighborhood school and so, you know, a little bit more walkable community. But, but there is, you know, precedent of schools in this county that don't provide general education, transportation.
I mean, it definitely feels like that's a direction which we may end up having to go into.
Which, just so everyone knows also...
With a relatively limited number of people that ride.
And just so you know, it was only actually in the past five years with LCFF that the, some districts made the move earlier when it was permitted because their transportation dollars they received didn't cover the expense. And so they actually gave up some of their funding to avoid a larger expense. But with LCFF, transportation dollars rolled into the base entitlement. And so it's no longer a separate categorical funding source. We would, you know, you give up no funding by offering or not offering transportation for Gen Ed.
So I understand if someone has an IEP, regardless of the other circumstances of their life, just because they have an IEP, we're required to provide them transportation to school? Regardless of whether that IEP requires them to be somewhere at a special time or anything, it's just, you're on IEP, we now have to provide your means to get to school?
Any plan or doesn't, doesn't there have to be some sort of need?
I will confirm that. I'll tell you that as far as what we're currently providing for special ed, it's 57 students. 18 are leaving the valley, going to county-operated regional programs. Within the county, or within the district, it's nine at Nordoff, six at Matilahaw, none at San Antonio, eight at Topa, 10 at Myers Oaks, three at Miramani, and three at A Place to Grow. So obviously, a very small portion of our actual special ed population who receive transportation.
Right, because we have well more than 57 students with IEPs.
Correct.
We're probably in the, well, we're, we know about 17%, right? We know about 17%.
300 plus.
Yeah, 300 plus.
But does that mean that we're required to, but they're not taking advantage of it? Or, I mean, didn't I have an IEP when my kid had speech? Does that require a bus? It's on campus?
No, no. I will give you the exact details of those four, again, I know it's four levels of what's required and, you know, what qualifies a student for each of those. I can send it out.
Just so you know too, the ridership that you're hearing about, which is really low, there's no question. The historical perspective, I can't tell you what it was like 15 years ago, but seven to eight years, not eight years ago when I came, it was much higher. And it's become much lower because the number of stops have been constricted so much. I mean, the year I came, in fact, I inherited a set of stops that was probably in the neighborhood of about 50% of what it had been in the previous years. And that was the budget constriction when it was obvious that rural days were coming, right? And we needed to do some non-personnel cutting. And then we cut more, as you said, no high school and no kindergarten. The kindergarten transportation was eliminated out back and high school going home was out. So we have, we've made a lot of changes in the last few years.
I'm wondering if, I know this is going to sound extreme, but if you're looking for ways to, with your budget, I was just thinking about my first year of teaching the kids that were in a rural district. There were, they rode the bus for an hour, one way. And that's kindergarten through eighth grade, one hour. And one hour home if you wanted to ride the bus. And nobody thought anything of it. It was, that's how you get to school. So I guess my question is, if you provide a, like, this is the route, here's your bus stop, and we have one bus and it goes here and it drops everybody off. We have so few kids. I guess, I know that sounds extreme, but it's like, if you're looking for ways to keep the district moving forward, then sometimes you have to say, no, we have a stop here, we have a stop here. You know, we have two stops in that area, two stops in that area. We have one bus. And yeah, Ojai's not that big, so you're not gonna be on the bus for an hour. I can't even imagine being on the bus for an hour. But this is what we do. And if you want your child to ride the bus, this is where it is and they can... I mean, you don't want your child to walk across the road, right? But if there was a stop here and here and here and they had to ride around to get to there, maybe they would just sit on the bus. I mean, I rode the bus from kindergarten through eighth grade and those were the best times of my life.
Until you met Chris.
Yeah. But I'm not kidding. It's so much fun. You talked and you had, there was such a social timeframe. It's not the end of the world for kids to sit on the bus for 35 minutes, you know?
Unfortunately, we're already there.
We actually, we only have two, well, we have two routes, one East End, one West End. We, I'm pulling up right now our actual schedule. But I do know that unfortunately, we do have students who are on the bus for a full hour.
They are, okay.
Yeah, so for instance, the West End route picks up the first group of students who could be going Nordoff or Matilahaw at 6:42. They're dropped off at, Matilahaw at 7:20, or they could also be picked up from Myers Oaks, I suppose. But 6:42, they're dropped off at 7:25 at Matilahaw or 7:30 at Myers Oaks. So that could be a 40, 45 minute ride that direction. On the West End afternoon route, Matilahaw, students are picked up at 2:18. And last stop, Woodland and Mira Lake is 3:20, so an hour. East End route, servicing San Antonio, Matilahaw, Nordoff that direction, and Topa. We pick up at Summit at 6:50. Students are dropped off at, Jane correctly said, 7:15 at San Antonio, 7:30 at Nordoff, 7:35 at Matilahaw. So again, those students at Summit going to Matilahaw are on the bus for 45. Topa, dropped off then at 8:05. The way home, we pick up students at San Antonio at 2:10. And if they are in San Antonio, they're being dropped off at 3:25 at Summit. I'm sorry, San Antonio students, if they live in Upper Ojai, are from 2:10 to 3:25 or 3:30.
Okay.
So yeah, we, we...
From 2:10, so an hour and a half?
Because it goes to Topa.
From San Antonio, because yeah, they, San Antonio goes to Matilahaw and then goes to Topa and then goes up to Summit as a final stop.
That's a discouraging factory.
Well, I...
The real estate agents need to let them know that before they buy the house up there, I guess.
I mean, hopefully everyone realizes that these ideas are just ideas, you know? I mean, to your point, Andy, that it sounds, you know, like you're being harsh. I mean, you're not, we're all thinking about ideas. I mean, I, you know, which, which makes me wonder also, what if we were to get rid of our transportation department altogether? And all that overhead, and all those buses, and all that? And then, and then limit what we do plus hire services to do what we need done? So that now we're not paying, you know, I mean, yeah, these are harsh statements, but this is reality. We're not paying all that overhead.
What do you mean, hire services?
So I actually...
I mean, bus services, somebody might in town choose to go into business.
Yeah, because we, our intent this entire year was that Cindy Sloan, our transportation supervisor, would not actually be riding or driving a route herself. The goal is that she'd be a dispatcher and a sub when necessary. But because of our being short-staffed with drivers, she's had to drive each day. So we explored, could we either, we reached out to Ventura Unified, see if they would have a driver that we could, that they could, you know, bill us whatever they want for. They said they don't have anyone, period. Even if we, you know, were willing to pay whatever price they offered, they just said they couldn't do it. Student Transportation Services of America in Durham were the other two that we connected with. And there was one other one out of Camarillo. But the average price per day was between 600 and 1,000 is what they're offering. So for an eight-hour day. That's, you know, one of the challenges, just going back to our current gap and filling the transportation vacancy. We offer, you know, these split shifts where we're asking some of the work, two hours in the morning, come back, two hours in the afternoon. And, you know, no benefits, nothing in between. They have to find a way to, you know, occupy the time otherwise. And it actually is a number of additional requirements that you must abide by even when you're not driving for a school district if you have your school bus, you know, certificate. And so there are folks down the hill, the private entities I just mentioned, as well as other districts, that will offer $5,000 signing bonuses and guaranteed eight-hour job just so they can actually get drivers. So we've been lucky that we've had three terrific drivers who've remained with us. If any of them left, I, I'm not confident we'd be able to replace them. But on the topic of contracting out, it's costly as well.
If you look at Nordoff High School, the athletics, I mean, the van program, that's an example, right there, they get hit hard with that.
As far as I can tell, what we've been doing, other than renting the vans, is coaches and parents have been driving the vans.
But renting's a problem with the size of the vans. If they were 10 passengers, they didn't have licenses to do that. We corrected that. But our group is so old, we were afraid to have our vehicles outside. As far as Santa Paula or Carver, it was like... And so that's gone. But in contracting that out, they see it for a change.
Well, I just said, aside, on Thursday, the Jazz Band is going to Reno. I'm driving my pickup truck and we are renting, they are renting two vans from Enterprise.
Whereas as a district, we used to provide that service. And as you said, it gave us options that now, that sometimes they just don't do it. Because of the coordinating of those efforts. We haven't had a vehicle that was in a condition that we were going to take out that far. Well, forget Reno, Oxford.
Don't say, it's closer.
Well, so, so it doesn't seem, it also doesn't seem realistic that we could ever completely lose our capacity to have diesel available somewhere to fill trucks and stuff. I mean, we're always, I assume, gonna need some of that, right? Some of that infrastructure. Whether we have buses or not, we're gonna need it for facilities, trucks, stuff, right? I mean, or not. This kind of dovetails into this property and moving and transportation as a department and, again, overhead.
So we currently have district credit cards at Chevron and Shell. And so like our athletic van... So we currently have district credit cards at Chevron and Shell, and so like our athletic vans are filled up there. We don't, they don't actually fill up on our property. I, if we went down to Gen Ed only, or I'm sorry, special ed only, that would actually be just one bus, the rest of the fleet and vans. We have one special ed bus, the new one that's, uh, been showed. Um, I don't believe so, but I, I don't know it's certain, too. I don't think it is. Do you?
Would it make any, I'm just telling ideas, I, I, I don't know, but would it make any difference to work with the community, in particular the city, to increase the safety of bike riding, walking through additional crossing guards you mentioned? There's the connection of the path between my Miramani and Myers Oaks going in now across there. And maybe more dedicated bike lanes that are more protected, something that would encourage people to ride their bikes, places to stop. And some one-time expenses that reoccurred and drop the, and encourage people to walk and, walk and ride their bikes. And which safer, I know it's nerve-wracking for parents to put their kids out there, but.
But I wholeheartedly agree, we've got this amazing bike trail that the kids aren't using in the morning, like.
So some way of, of make, well, make, ensuring parents that it's safe and, and.
And maybe that involves parents, you know? They, we have guaranteed on a rotation, parent volunteers who are, are along the bike trail at certain intervals, watching the kids, and, you know.
You know, when my kids were in preschool at Monica Ross, you had a, a shift, and I don't remember if it was just for the trimester or whatever, but it, they needed help with the parking lot. And so I worked at Tuesday morning, you know, getting kids out of the car shift, like the teachers do at Topa Topa, but it was parents. And it wasn't every day, it wasn't.
And not every parent is gonna be able to do it.
Right, but it was, it was worked out that, you know, so I don't know.
And in addition to that, I would love to see us work with Kelly Pasco and get on Nordoff and Matilahaw campuses. Like, um, repair stations where kids can bring their bikes and, and learn how to fix them, so that they can be like one by one.
There's also, um, I think I mentioned this one time before, I was at, I was at a trail conference, uh, and in Palm Springs. And they have put a, they're putting in a bike pedestrian highway, the whole length of the valley, right? And they were trying to raise money for it through more traditional means of transportation, cities, that kind of stuff. And we didn't go over it, but then they decided to broaden the whole idea, put it into health, this sort of thing like this. And within a year, they raised seventy million dollars for that idea.
Oh, wow.
And on the basis, from sources like health and safety and stuff like that, because it's healthy to ride your bike and walk and do all these things.
There are a ton of grants for health stuff.
Yeah, but they, but the whole message of this guy was, we raised a ton of money to do this through an incredible variety of sources you'd never associate with like that. And so money is possibly out there to put into something that's actually quite unusual. This is, you know, this is a big deal, this Coachella, this is a race thing, you know? Overpasses and stuff like this, you know, it's really elaborate, but, you, you know, seventy million dollars go a long way. But he was adamant that, that people are really concerned about this now, all the way down to admissions and things like air quality, so.
Yeah, and Ojai has terrible air quality, so that would.
And you have a sort of, we do have a path, like.
We have an infrastructure to start.
Right, right through the Arbolata.
The Arbolata's scary on a bike.
It's scary to ride my bike.
This was all the stuff that was part of Complete Streets, right? Was it, was a safe bike path to all of our schools.
Yeah. Javier Ramirez, Greg Davis and I met with Greg Grant with the city, headed Public Works for them, just maybe six weeks ago. Uh, because they actually, one, knew our very strong support for this exact initiative and are beginning to move forward. They did receive a, a grant at the state, and I think some federal funds as well. Uh, but they have a full plan, and we're asking for our feedback on exactly how best it could be integrated to facilitate or encourage ridership, especially at the, at Matilahaw and at Nordoff. And so their plan does include a, um, bringing down, uh, Maricopa Highway between Bonds and El Robla or Kiama. Down to one road, or one lane each way, creating a protected parking lane, and then an actual protected bike lane. So it'll be a very, very protected bike lane. Also talking about narrowing the, um, width of the roads coming on Ojai Avenue into town. And adding, while they won't be protected, but at least wider and clearly marked bike lanes, I think class four is what they are. Uh, bike lanes coming from, again, Bonds down, down this way. So, um, they were terrific to, you know, ask for our support and feedback, and Javier was giving, you know, just ideas as far as what, how do students actually travel to Matilahaw from the bike path or from the, you know, south side of Ojai Avenue? And so they absolutely were taking that feedback into account and are moving forward quickly with some. Um, I, the first step is gonna be the additional beakend crosswalks on Maricopa Highway, uh, near Nordoff. But they have, yeah, a number of steps in place here coming up.
But I have to go back to my very, very original statement. You're not gonna get Matilahaw and Nordoff students to ride their bike if they have to be there at seven thirty in the morning. I think that has to go into this conversation also. If it's gonna take you that long to, to travel by bike.
Well, and in the winter, it's gonna look colder.
In the winter, it's dark. It's not a lit bike path, it's, and it's dark at seven fifteen. So it's prohibitive, I happen to know that, cause my kid did it for a while, and I, it was scary sending him out there when it was still dark out.
And with the time changer goes back and forth, so.
Right, right.
This, this, this Coachella has, has little bitty overhead lights, like. You should see this thing, it is amazing.
High-speed rail.
I mean, it's designed for, it has a footpath, bicycle paths, it's got lanes, it's got signs, it's got lights, it's got stops, it's got all of these things. And, uh, you know, because.
Is it air-conditioned? I was about to say, it gets a little toasty out there.
Yeah, I think it's just the mist, yeah, nothing.
Oh, you're admitting that it's a, it's a major push on all fronts, not just schooling, it's a, it's a whole shift in society trying to get ourselves around.
And I love it, my only, well, really, actually, it is. My only concern about it is the weak link on the bike path is where it crosses streets. And I, and that's, cause even parents don't often look before they cross.
And I think that will be a consideration, should this happen. But once people start, get used to people using the bike trail.
I think with their student crossings, hydraulic, they steel posts come up.
That'd be good. But you know, kids used to do this all the time, right?
But you know, you know, um, it's funny, I was talking to a guy, I haven't seen. I was talking to a guy today who's a, who I hadn't seen in like ten years, and he used to ride a motorcycle. And I said, hey, Rick, you still, still riding a motorcycle? He goes, do you? And I said, why not? He goes, cell phones? It's like, it is so hairy being on a motorcycle in a world of texting and cell phones. And I think of the same thing when it comes to kids on bikes, you know, I mean.
Cause you can't hold the handlebars while you're texting.
Protected, sounds good, but, I mean, I, man, knuckleheads all over the place, you know? I remember last year, there was a bunch of discussion on Facebook about people driving down Grand in the morning against the, the sunlight. And there were literally people like going, it's just, I mean, I've had, I have to be honest, I've driven along there sometimes, I haven't been able to see a thing. People are like, if you're driving and you can't see a thing, you stop your car, you pull over, and it's like, oh, that's just not realistic. Are you kidding me? People driving and can't see anything, they're just driving, that's cool.
But there are times of day one you can't.
But I mean, but you gotta, you can't be driving, you can't be driving a two thousand pound car and not be able to see.
Again, if school started later, the sun would be in a different place, I'll just put that button. Well, I also think that you never, it's, those things will never happen if there's busing. I, I mean, why would you, you know, or if you don't, if you don't say this is, like, no, there's no more busing. But we have mapped out this plan, we do have a crossing guard here, we have a crossing, I mean, crossing guards are, I would think, much less expensive than the entire busing. Right? So if you said we have a crossing guard at this time and this time for this amount, or however you wanna set it up. And you say, this is what we've provided, and these are the bus stops, but they're now bike stops and lock stops. I mean, we would, I think if we want to do that, then you have to, we have to say, no, this is what we've provided. We've got this, this, and this, these are the people here, this is the timeframe, and here's the path. And that's not that hard to figure out, again, Ojai's not that big. And, and then you work to make it safer and safer and safer and safer, so that you do eventually have this pedestrian, protected pedestrian way. I mean, for me, if I had children, I would be looking at the bike path and saying, I'm, I'm afraid for you to be on that bike path. Because, not because you're unsafe from, I just don't know the people on the bike path. I don't know who's there, right? And I, I don't, and I've been afraid at, at night if I'm on the bike. Um, so I think we, we have to think through all those steps, if that's what we wanna do. But then you also have to say, this is no longer available. This, as long as something's available, people will take advantage of it.
And I don't know that the bike path itself is convenient for most people. I mean, if you're at Topa, you're, you're here, you're, I mean, there's a few, but even from Shelley's, you're not taking the bike path. I mean, my kids from my house didn't even take the bike path to Matilahaw, because it meant going this way, and then this way, and then this way. So they just went straight there.
Yeah.
So the bike path itself is.
Yeah.
Not.
But then there's not really any other way to get from this side to this side. I mean, the Arbolata's not safe in the morning.
Yeah.
The Arbolata's not safe in the morning. You know, if, there's just too many, like when I've ridden, my bike through there, there's no place to go.
There's.
And the, the high school kids, I, I probably drove like this too, so. But they're, they're in a hurry to get to school, right? And they're not really thinking about the person on the bike, so, you know, I just, we would have to think that through, though, to make sure.
These numbers, though, from, on our bus riders, especially at Topa, sixteen and eighteen kids. That we have this whole bus going for sixteen, and I can tell you, six to eight of them are at my daughter's stop. So there's only ten coming not from my neighborhood. That's a lot.
I'm really concerned, um, just listening to the conversation. Summit School had a row of trees along the highway. There used to be a turnstile right there, so kids couldn't walk out onto the highway. And there's a modernization that was taken away, but people didn't know about the fatality of a kid going out into that traffic, which is supposed to be twenty-five miles an hour. The principal that was there has documented for over twenty years. And it took that last fatality in front of Miramani before that signal light went out. And pedestrian on our highways, even in this little piece here, I don't know the number, but I just got through an AAA that says like fourteen percent of pedestrians, they're talking about their insurance, and that, that's the big fatalities, pedestrians, sidewalks. And for us to even have that conversation, I rode my bicycle to work here for five years. And there's several places, like you point out, the Arbolata, not an option, I don't care what time of day. But in the morning, it's just high risk, but when you get on the bicycle trail, the Nordoff kids would be in, same thing I was, cause I worked at eight o'clock. You have coyotes, wildlife, on that section between the Y, the Old Y Valley Inn. And coming up, up almost to the park, cause the animals are using those same corridors. And it's pretty wild to come up on a coyote or a group coyotes in the morning, I've had it happen. A bobcat one time, but I think it was more frightened of me, cause I go fast, but. My point is that we've had leadership here do big studies on this with frustrationism. And, uh, we're talking about our little people, and I've been hired here that my number one function, working for the district to save them. And, yeah, I know a bus might be expensive, but to look at the alternative. I mean, when the Nordoff kid there, who wanted to see his dad. I know we're talking about money, but we're also talking about schools. And, and, um, seeing what Mr. Hartman went through to make those things right. So I have a hard time with it. Uh, I happened to be here on Christmas Day when there was no fuel available in the valley. And the Sheriff's Department, I just came to my house so that I could go out here and give them fuel, because it wasn't peaceful in the valley when we were converting Karen Manley. Remember that story? I was pretty amazed, we're the only ones that had fuel. And we are a small little valley, and I know that money is a issue, and I do agree with some of the parents in that. I've been here when we had road closures, east side, west side is part of what we do at. We had one bus driver have a oak tree go through in front of the bus while she had the kids on there years ago. That road was shut down for a while. Taking Matilahaw or Creek Road, the rocks, so years back, we had a rock hit the back of the bus as it was going through. So even though we looked for the grand answer, one of them was to start school at a different time. And sports prevailed, um, or the band activities as far as starting later in the day. Um, because the band activities are already going later in the day over there, that's sports. So I've always argued that all seven thousand of us are on the road at the same time. And we know that because trying to make a left-hand turn anywhere in town, right? We're all out there, and motorizing is a great example, if you're not gonna make a left, it's too right, forget it. So, but when we're putting kids out there, that's just, it's an emotion for me, uh, that I don't wanna visit. And yes, it's an expense, but we, as a district, have spent money to be said. And I think that that's still a high priority, that Angie's already pointed out the traffic. I know that there's the SRS at the state level, uh, safe routes to schools, and there's been funding that comes that way. And like Angie's already pointed out, bringing that energy together. So there has been grant money awarded, and we're being cautious, just like we are with Medicare money, cause it's not abundant. But as Angie's already pointed out, there are some efforts taking place, but there's certainly some gaps that, uh, I don't wanna see our kids thrown into, in the effort to save the money.
Do you know, Hank, why, cause when they were talking about the, um, trucks from the, um.
Quarry.
gravel, the quarry, that, that used to be eight thirty, why was the time of day moved to seven forty?
The, uh, the argument, the argument was, uh, that when Nordoff went earlier, right? So that originally it was set up for what, I guess we had called it, but then when Nordoff went earlier, uh, the.
No, I was asking, why did Nordoff go earlier?
You know, my, my suspicion is it had, it had something to do with what Chuck was talking about. As, as sports programs proliferate, right? Uh, you need to get out earlier to have, to travel, cause you know, we don't have, let's talk a little bit about ourselves here. The teams we play are not very close, you know, so, and I know one thing we looked at, we do, to support what Shelley's saying. If you take a look at the average start time for high schools, uh, in the county, right, there's the county, Andy, we're about twenty minutes earlier. It's not radically early, but we're about, we're about twenty minutes early. So let's say the, the norm is seven forty, five fifty to eight, sort of in that range. Uh, but when you're, when you're talking about getting kids out of school early, so you're missing school to get on a bus, to drive an hour, ten, hour, fifteen minutes to play a game, right? Generally, what's happened, it's not just here, it's other places I've been too, that starting times for high schools have been pushed earlier over the last twenty years as sports programs have, have increased. I think that was the reason, that was my understanding.
Yeah, but I started looking at the sports, and most of the games this year, I mean, obviously, football's on Friday nights or Saturday, seven P M. You know, basketball games tend to be at six thirty or seven, um, you know, I, I mean, obviously, there's JV beforehand, but.
And it's the JV that drives it, because they all usually travel together to get there for the JV start, which is sort of weird.
I mean, it is worth, I agree with you, it would be worth having a conversation with Renee McCowen. Just take a look at all the start times. I do know, though, cause I, I don't always read the bulletin for the high school, but I read it a lot. And there is a lot of please excuse X, Y, and Z for this activity, you know, from this period, last period or last two periods, in order to get on a bus, in order to get there on time.
Right, but I mean, and, and I do know, you know, there are some, you know, we could obviously say, cause I, you know, originally, I had heard people say, you know, but then they get home to dinner, so everything's later, it's like, yeah, but they're not going to sleep until midnight anyway. So it's sort of like, you know, so you have dinner at seven thirty instead of six thirty, or you have dinner, you know, it's sort of like, that's, you know, these kids who are doing the play. Or there's, there's gonna be an effect, but, um, I think the, the, if the whole day is moved, it, it's fine. In terms of sports, I mean, yeah, you might have to say, you know, we, I mean, I know my kids were at Thatcher. There was, they played some Jewish teams that could not play at certain times until the sun had gone down, and they could get on a bus and go, so. Thatcher rearranged the schedule for those schools, so, you know, if we could say to Fillmore, we can't play a game until five, because our school goes till three thirty.
I don't think that's real.
I don't think that's realistic. And along with what Hank's saying, I know this, Jim does swimming and water polo. And the JV varsity thing doesn't matter, they travel as a team. So the whole team has to be there together for the first meet, or the first, you know, competition. And he's, I just heard him today, they had a, I just came from a swim meet at Villanova. And as he was leaving, he saw McCow and he said, so tomorrow, one o'clock, for their next meet, they're all meeting at one o'clock. So he'll miss, you know, whatever class. And if he started later, he missed two classes.
But my question is, is that because of busing? That the junior, or the JV and the varsity go together? Or is that just tradition that we could decide not to continue?
Well, because realistically, they're traveling, they're scrambling all the time to get rides. They don't typically get a bus, they get vans. So you're talking about.
Or private cars.
Yeah, so you're talking about putting new logistics onto a coach, saying, some of these kids swim on both teams. Sometimes, for example, with water polo, they play both in the, some in the JV game and then are available to also play or swim in the varsity. Usually varsity goes first, which is not typical, like in football, JV goes first, but usually varsity goes first. I'm just saying, even if it's Fillmore, you still have to leave. You're gonna want to be in the water going by like whatever time, three-thirty, three o'clock. They have to leave, they want to get there an hour ahead of time, traffic, you know, it's just how it is.
I'm actually gonna move us away from the timing and back to the budget. So we talked about transportation. Is there another item that anybody?
I actually had a couple of things. One, I know we talked about this before in telecommunications, and I know you've done a review and saved a lot of money. And I'm not sure, is there, I don't know if we're piggybacking on anybody else's. And is there, have we ever looked at working with the city again? Or some other entity as like a larger customer to maybe get a better rate even? I don't know. I know that in some cases, in some of the schools I've worked with, we've been able to either work with the city or like for internet. You know, when we were at our other building, we got our internet from Ventura Unified, right? We were in their building. So, you know, yeah, absolutely.
And now you're moving, right?
And now we're moving, we're gonna have to pay for it. But.
So we currently have piggybacked on the county's plan. Although we are exploring actually moving away from that and seeing if we can get a better deal, or at minimum have higher reliability of service by leaving the county. But that was the reason that we joined the county was for cost savings, certainly.
And then the other thing, and this is, this is just way out there, but I know that the Community College District has been working on its eighty-two eighty-eight dual enrollment contracts or agreements, whatever they call it. And they're starting now to talk to a couple of other districts about setting up a program. And there is some, it's a revenue stream, not an expense reduction, but it's, and I don't know that it's a huge one, because I don't know how deeply we would be able to take advantage of something like that. But I'm just wondering if there's any interest, because I know the district is starting to shop around for partner districts.
I would have whoever it is that's working at the county level call me.
That would actually be from the Community College District.
What did I say, I'm sorry. County, yeah, no, it could be, yeah, Community College District. Just have the person call me, and we'll get it going.
Well, since we're talking about solar, I, there had, and we brought this up before, but perhaps wells to get water at some of our locations. I don't know how feasible that is, but some people think it is.
Right. I've heard two divergent opinions on that, you know? One from the person who wants to drill the wells, and the other one who is in charge of the water for the area. And they're both, they're both really smart people, you know?
The conversation may be different today than it was six months ago.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
So, but I don't know, I think it's worth looking at also.
How would that save us money?
Well, long term, we wouldn't have water bills if we're using our own water.
Well, actually, the person who thinks there's a future there feels it could be actually a revenue stream for the district.
Because we can solve the water.
Wow.
Said more.
Yeah.
We used to have a water well in Nordoff.
So how do we play that?
And what happened to it?
He's presenting with Steve Wixter.
It used to base these in west, water wells on the west end.
He's the executive director of it.
Then when they rotated the stadium from this south, it's now underneath the bleachers. So we actually did have a stadium, a water system there. And with that being a priority, that might be a great place, even if it's not potable water, to at least keep that green for its usage.
Right, well, also for fire, I mean, it doesn't hurt to have more. And then also if it is potable, for the pool, right? Because that uses a lot of water. Gotta bring the pool in there, so it was a stretch, but I got it in.
And if we had, if we had a different pool, it would need more water.
Exactly, right, right. So, so that's good. I think another, I kept my normal things in here for a long time. So online learning, I think that, you know, I don't know that there are a lot of students to pick up, but every student we pick up is ADA. And I think there are students out there who would be willing to do their online learning through Nordoff if they could participate in sports, or art, or theater, or music. So I think that there are ways to make more money that way.
And we're gonna maybe talk about that next week.
It's on the agenda for next Tuesday.
So I think that's, the other, so the big thing, big picture item that I was thinking about is, and you know, I, I didn't want to go to larger class sizes. But if we're going to have to go to larger class sizes in the next few years, maybe we look at moving that up a year, year and a half, and be proactive about it, and make a decision, you know, do we want, as a policy, do we want to keep larger class sizes in the early grades? Do we want to scale those back so that we, you know, we're making, we're being proactive instead of reactive when, you know, when we can plan and save money rather than being at the point of saying, well, we just don't have any money anymore, so we have to do it. And then perhaps we, you know, minimize the challenge that we have out year three by moving that up to year two, by being more methodical about it.
What, I mean, that suggests to me, you mean, you would be looking to cut teachers, obviously? You have less teachers.
Well, we're going to have to, right? Based on our budget, out three years.
Well, maybe, or you could cut administrators, or you could cut other overhead.
Well, but there's not that much over, if we were to take the whole rest of the budget, there's not that much money.
There's a quarter of a million dollars in transportation.
I mean, really, that's true. I mean, you have, you know, potentially you could double up principals, you could do all, you know, you could outsource. This goes into some of the things I'm interested in, outsourcing, thinking about administrative jobs that we currently have that we could potentially outsource, where we would no longer have to be paying for insurance and kicking into the union. On the plus, well, are you done? Sorry, but I was interested in what you're.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's the, that's the basic idea, I'm sure there's more to say, but yeah, go ahead.
Because I think we historically, I think if the teachers, you know, obviously our biggest component of the budget is personnel. So that's obviously, you know, the most obvious place to look when you have to reduce your budget. But where in personnel, I think, is still a big question.
The outsourcing in particular?
Well, no, I mean, just in terms of cuts, you know, if you're gonna cut teachers and thus have bigger classes, you know, I mean, that day will come. We'll have to have that conversation, but I don't take it as a fait accompli that that's how you do it.
Can you give me an example of maybe something that might be outsourced?
Well, I don't know, like I said, I mean, you know, you look at business services and say, could we outsource? Could we hire somebody, you know, who's doing some work like that already, and not have to, you know, do that ourselves? Could we increase our use of technology? So that we're using more sophisticated software? So we don't have to have the same level of personnel engagement? Some of the things that we have to do here to keep track of things and to account for things. On the plus side, technology for ADA capture. And going to the point of online school, I happen to have a case right now about a private online school, K-12. So I know a lot about it now. But of course, we'd have to have a curriculum, an online curriculum. We'd probably have to buy it from somebody.
They do this already at Nordoff, it's just a matter of.
From whom?
Apep.
Well, I did.
But I mean, is it, is ADA approved and everything?
Yeah.
Great. So, and to me, that's another way of capturing ADA with apps and kids. Does anyone, is it possible for us to allow a kid who's sick to spend a day online? And thus capture that ADA? We've talked before about doing a better job of free and reduced lunch. Identifying, again, can, is there, are there ways that we can use technology to do that? Are there ways that would make it less, except there's an embarrassing aspect of it, or an aspect of it where people don't want to come forward? Is there a way to do that with a kind of a, you know, more easier way to engage it that's not so personal?
Well, and I also think if you go into nutrition, we have to, have to talk about the food. I mean, I know they're saying, you know, now we have fresher foods, and we have to get that information out there about the great, how the food is better. But then you're also getting a kid who's like, I just wish there was pizza, you know, or.
I have a kid who came home and said, there's nothing to eat, nothing's vegetarian, there were no salads. So they like more fresh.
Right, but, and, you know, I, we have the same thing at our, you know, people say, there's, there was no blah, 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 blah. And I go in, and they're like, yes, there is, you know, it's right there. We have Caesar salad, what are you talking about? You know, so.
And you're reminding me of other ideas that have been floated, I think, around. Like to use some of our facilities that we're not using for artist studios. We could do revenue share on what they sell. I mean, they're nonprofit, O E F, we just came from a meeting. I don't know if they've ever been offered space to run an office.
We gave it to them.
Did we? Oh, okay. See how good we are?
And we gave it to, oh, and now you found this, you do. It was a freebie. Of course, they had no money to pay for it anyways.
Right, but if they bring us more money, then it's a win-win.
They've been trying.
Kevin, you have those?
Well, you know, the free and reduced, we kind of went on a tangent about the quality of the food. But I'm talking, what I'm talking about is identifying people who are eligible. I think it's a huge area where we have potential upside. And maybe that also is related currently in some ways to the issues with immigration. You know, better, more declarative information about what we do and don't collect, do and don't need. You know, a lot of this stuff looks like a big black box to people, you know? Every time I encounter somebody who's interested in possibly in getting involved with a lawyer, the first thing I always do is try to reassure them, like, look, I want you to be absolutely clear. You're not gonna pay nickel until there's something clearly that we're gonna, you know, because people, they don't know, they don't, and sometimes because they don't know, they never engage it at all. So, you know, we as a district might be able to better, you know, again, maybe something online, maybe something, you know, that's more, hey, there's absolutely, there's nothing to be afraid of. We're not harvesting your information and making it available to, you know, people that you don't want to see it. We're not, we don't need, I don't know what we need for free and reduced. Do we need a social security number?
Yes.
Okay.
But is there a way to, like, sometimes people just need information. They just, like, people read the Ojai Valley News, right? So if there's an editorial that explains school funding, and why we're not getting the same funding as Oxnard, or how we get that information? Just, just something that says, this is how it works. We get this amount of money, we get this amount of money for these people, and we get this amount of money, and this is how we identify those people. And we're, we just need this much more to get this pot of money, do you know what I mean? Like.
But didn't after the seven-eleven, didn't we do that?
I feel like it was done, and it didn't yield much. And I'm wondering, is there really a big gap between?
Andy, I was gonna ask Andy. So we're, I know what the most recent number was, we're about forty-five percent free or free and reduced lunch, for free or reduced lunch. Which actually is up, an uptick from about forty, forty-one when they changed the criteria. Because at one point, we were pushing fifty, but then they changed the criteria. So I think Shelley's point is really well taken. How big a gap do you think there is between, it's just, it's just a guess, between that forty-five percent and what we could yield with all kinds of comforting, not in your face, not.
Whatever, that was, that was an example.
I know what you mean. But, you know, any kind of thing you could imagine that would make it easier and, you know, less out there, you know, to say, I need money. Your point too, Hannah.
And also, it's counterintuitive, because somebody who thinks they're getting a freebie, thinks it's all about just them, to realize it's actually not, it's actually for us. And that's, that's a counterintuitive thing that may not be messaged very well.
Well, also, parents don't understand.
Yeah, they do benefit.
They don't know how it works at school. So they don't know that the kids, they don't necessarily know that when we line up, I don't go, well, you're free and reduced, and you're free and reduced, and you're free and reduced. They don't know that we don't, we just line up, we go to lunch, and then.
And you have the card.
And then they get their card and they check it. And so they don't, there's systems that I think parents, if they understood, then they might, they might be more willing to check the boxes and send it in. And, and then also, so knowing that we don't identify, I don't, I often have to say, can somebody please let me know who my, I never know? Because I don't look at the little cards, I'm too busy. And then, like, yes, people heard about it during the seven-eleven, but if I wasn't listening to that information, what I was listening for is, are they closing this school or not? Right? That's all what, that's, that's what people's minds are on. And so I think, I think publicizing what we need and why, and how it works, and how you, all you have to do is fill in forms. You know, I do that at my parent meeting. One of the first things I say is, see this form, fill it out, it gets us money. I, that's all you have to do. And then I kind of explain what it is. But I feel like sometimes we need to do a better job of explaining what it is that we're doing and how things work. So parents who are just overwhelmed when they get to kindergarten with all that information, they all, they have heard it like six times in the Ojai Valley News, they've heard it here, they've heard it here, they've seen it, you know, just so that they get, oh, this is a, like you said, this isn't about me, this is about the entire district. And once they, you know, most, a lot of parents sign up, but they don't, we still don't know how their child eats hot lunch.
Is that a federal or a state program?
What's that?
Free and reduced, is it federal?
It's federal.
Okay.
And that's what we're like. Years ago, John Lessor pushed it hard and explained it. And I don't think that we saw a significant increase in number of kids who qualify. I think I'm, I would be very curious to know what the gap is between what, you know, our forty-five percent and what the census says.
So I did look at that back in summer, early fall. We're not far off from it. If I recall correctly, it's low forties. And I actually was surprised. Now, the reality is it's a skewed data set, because there are plenty of wealthier families who may not be sending their children to public schools, or may not actually have children within the district. But if you look at the actual income cutoff points, and what that would qualify them for, we're actually right in line with the demographics of the valley. So back to Hank's question, I think that there are plenty of things that we could be doing. I think that everyone's nailed it really well, that a big part of the marketing we try to do, although obviously not to the degree of success that we would like, but we try to. And Suzanne did a great job, one of her last acts before moving down to Oxnard, was going to every back-to-school night, going to as many activities in the beginning of the school year she could, and helping people realize exactly what we're talking about. This is not about even whether or not you want to actually get lunch from the schools. Simply by you filling out the application, you bring in approximately fourteen hundred dollars by doing that, if you qualify. So we've been pushing it, and leadership team are encouraging our principals to consider who might qualify. And there's actually a separate method that they're able to directly certify an employee, or a student, and so there have been a few of those that have happened. I don't see us being above fifty-five percent. I don't see any reason, or I don't see any, anything in our demographic or census information that suggests that our population has over fifty-five percent qualifying. But do we have more than forty-five percent? I think we all know with certainty, of course, there's some, some amount there not filling it out.
So out of curiosity. So out of curiosity, you do have to have a social security number in order to partake? In order to know, is there a way to get around the social security number?
Correct. So actually, I have the form up right now, and what, this is the state form that we just attached our layerhead to. And it asks, it doesn't ask for the full social, it says the last four digits, or you can check here for, you know, none or NA, is what districts do. And so it is absolutely not permitted for us to exclude a student for not filling out the last four or for checking the, the none box.
Well, how does it work? Like, I know, you know, my kids are in college, so the FAFSA form, I have to give copies of my tax, tax returns. But if you don't, if you're illegal and you don't have tax returns, how do you prove that you are qualified for?
I think that's, they use the social to access.
No, no, definitely not.
No?
Well, first of all, they, they never would ask for the parent's social anyway. This is the student last four, but again, you don't need to actually fill it out.
Has that changed?
Not to my knowledge.
No?
So, so the only way that they actually, you know, I don't claim to be an expert in this, and if I say anything that's incorrect, then I will check with Julie and correct it immediately and email it to you guys. But to my understanding, and Patty, correct me if you know any different, they only check the income verification on a very, very small set that they'll do each year in audit, and I believe that last year Suzanne did it, the number was less than ten, that they actually asked for income verification. We don't have any method, nor does the state or feds have any method of taking this application and cross-referencing it with their ten forty or anything like that. What they have the ability to do is, if they're randomly selected in that audit, then we have to actually email them or send letters or do some way of reaching out to them and ask them to provide their, their, you know, payroll stuffs or some evidence of their income. And unfortunately, typically when that happens, just not because I in any way think people are being dishonest, but just it's.
Cumbersome.
It's intrusive, it's cumbersome, it's, you know, anytime you're asking someone to opt in, you know, it takes a little more work. And so we typically have a very low percent of those who are asked for income verification to actually, that actually provide it to us. And the only penalty or consequence for that is that those individual families are pulled out of the system if they don't respond. There's no number that we, you know, if they pulled ten applications and none of the ten, ten actually submitted the information or qualified, there's no circumstance with all ten not qualifying or any, you know, fraction between zero and ten. That would cause them to expand their search. So they only are, they will tell us, you know, which ones are randomly selected, those are the ones they look at. And again, last time, to my recollection, it was something like three out of six who didn't or something like that. And they said, okay, that's fine, we'll move on, so.
So what's the point of the audit then?
The reason I am recalling this is because of how silly I thought it was, you know, I asked questions, never, never was satisfied. But it's one of those things where I was okay with not being satisfied, did it work in their favor? Do you know anything otherwise? Is that your?
Yeah.
I mean, it's less, I mean, single-digit number of people who we actually ask for income verification. Other than that, everyone's trusted based on what they fill out.
But you do one form for a family, not one form per kid, so.
That's correct.
It's not a student's social security number, it's the adult's social security number.
Once again, I, once again, there's no social required.
Well, I remember when I first filled it out, because I've been on free and reduced lunch and filled out the form and said, I'm not giving you my social security number. There's no way I'm giving you my social security number and turned it in without it, so I got a phone call from the district saying, we need your social security number. Yeah. Which is why I remembered the social security number.
Maybe we need more training.
So.
Well, again, this is the sixteen, seventeen application I pulled up.
Perhaps it changed, because I was.
And it doesn't even allow you to actually enter in your full nine-digit number. It does ask for the last four digits, but it gives you the box to check that you're not providing it.
And when they ask for that information, I assumed, well, they're going to go and check on me, and they're going to make sure, that was their way of verifying. So maybe misinformation is out there, keeping people from doing it. And I didn't know you could check none. That's good to know, too. I, I wonder though if it's just per family, only because I know there are older kids that are in free and reduced, but then my students have to fill out the form as well in kindergarten, they always have to fill out the form.
Well, the form is an annual form.
Oh, okay.
So we need, that's one of the challenges, that a family might fill it out last year, but not either have different life circumstances where they no longer qualify or just think, hey, I filled it out four years ago, and so I'm still okay. But no, it's an annual form that must be filled out.
But it seems like, if memory serves, those families who are on it before school starts gets a letter from the district.
That's correct. And we give, it's like a one-month grace period where they don't actually get kicked off till October first.
Till October.
Yeah, that's correct.
How did it work out this year? I remember we were talking about that before the October first. Did we lose a lot? Did everyone?
Well, I know that our numbers are higher this year than last year. I don't know how many were on it last year that fell off in October that have not come back on. I can find that out.
I do have another item. Do you have another item?
Yeah. I think, you know, potentially use of independent contractors, just is a broad concept, I think I mentioned that.
So my, my other topic to look at, another big expense every month is our, our health insurance. And I noticed that we have multiple options, all our employees have multiple options. And the top option is sixteen grand a year, a year? And the bottom option is fourteen grand a year. And so I think if we get to the point of rather than losing staff, one of the things to look at is, well, what, what's the difference in those two things? Why, is this, how much better is this one? Or, you know, if we say, well, we're going to pay for this fourteen thousand dollar a year one, you could choose the other one, but you'd have to pay the other two thousand. And these are just options, I'm not saying we go there. I have no idea what the difference is between those two. But it's interesting, or there's three, there's three different choices that, you know, we, we've, we've provided this choice. And the choice is costing us, I mean, how many employees do we have that are on insurance?
Yeah, you did just send it, I'll give the exact number.
The power of computing, it's wonderful to have this, so it's.
So we have a hundred and forty-nine who are in the most expensive, the Anthem PPO, and that includes retirees.
I just meant the whole number, like if.
Whole number is, let's see, one forty-nine.
Well, I see what you're saying, one hundred and forty-nine. So we'd save three hundred thousand dollars.
Two thirty.
If we chose not, at some point, to provide the top kind. I don't, you know, it might, the bottom one might be awful. I'm not saying that I want to just do that, but I'm just saying it might be something in the future that we want to look at. I mean, three hundred thousand dollars is three teachers? Four teachers?
Four plus.
And I know I did, I do, you know, I know Andy and I have spoken in the past about, like, when we have multiple, like, a family, like, you know, Dave Munson and his wife, you know, they both work for the district, we're paying sixteen thousand for, assuming they are on the top price, right? So what, if we looked at, maybe what we look at is not going with that particular choice and what, how, how would that affect our bottom line? And there's all sorts of complications, there's all sorts of, you know, one way you could, actually, Andy did a little workup for me, it actually was more expensive to do it that way. So there, there's just, at some point, I think there's a, you know, one, in our, in our board policies, we pay for health insurance for the board. You know, maybe at some point we say, we can't afford health insurance for the board anymore. Or we cha, we start cha, I just think, when you look at that number, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a month is what we pay in health insurance. That's a big number.
I have on my list here a little bit about health insurance, wondering if, I don't understand how it works, but I, my understanding is that we pay for the whole family. And I don't know if it's possible to split that up as we get teachers who retire? If, in order to draw in new teachers who perhaps are younger and single and don't have other people to insure? Is there a possibility of they don't need the full family insurance, it's a single policy, a single person?
Well, if they're a single person, they're getting a single policy. But where we might end up looking is like, look, we still want the top policy for our staff, but we're only going to pay for it for them and a spouse. Well, maybe they're, or, I don't know how that works. You know, those are just things that I know as a private business owner, those are the things you look at. Obviously, I don't have unions at my business, you know, there's lots of, but, but at some point, we start making decisions three years out. That's a future option to look at. What are we providing? What are the, you know, how much is it costing the district? Is, is, is this lower policy still a good policy? You know?
Andy, how much are people going out of pocket on monthly premiums, if at all?
None at all.
Right, so right now, there's, there's no.
Well, I'm sorry, for medical, none at all, for dental, they could be if they had additional.
Yeah, I'm talking just the premium, not the co-pays or the, all that, right? And so.
Right, right, I understand. So for medical and vision, it's fully covered for the staff and their dependents. Dent and life, well, that's not for family, but yeah, it's in, in life as well. Vision or dental will be the one area where we only provide for the employee, and if they want to supplement coverage for the rest of their family, then they're actually picking up the difference.
Now, of course, this is negotiable for three quarters of this district, and so that's a huge challenge. But there are a number of districts where it isn't free every month, right? There is a hundred, two hundred dollar a month.
True.
Kick in.
Suzanne was, I just talked to Suzanne Lugenhoff, again, who I mentioned earlier, Oxnard Allen, she was saying she spends six thousand dollars a year, now five hundred per month is coming out.
Five hundred?
That's what Oxnard Allen is.
How'd they compare with this?
I, I came from Oxnard Allen, right before I left, I was paying about four seventy-nine a month.
Oxnard Union?
For your, for a share?
Elementary. Her, her, for, and it was the same thing, it was, it didn't matter if I had, was myself or if I had, I was married with ten kids. It was the same rate across the board, but that was four seventy, and I think now they're a little bit over five hundred a month.
Did she, did she compare the six thousand with the increase in salary?
She was still satisfied overall.
She netted it, netted, netted a plus.
She did, net a plus, correct.
I will say this, though, I have to give credit to Sisk, because the increases that I've seen over the last few years have been below the county average.
Right, absolutely.
Have been very, very low. So whatever they're doing to hold it to one and two percent is magic.
Yeah, they're doing good.
However.
Right, I absolutely agree with what you said, Michael. They, and a big part of that is just having a large risk pool, they're able to share that better than the, you know, wave of the, of SIBO. But unfortunately, we did just receive the update in the past week for next year's rates, and it is looking closer to eight percent for next year across the three plans. Which is still actually in line with what many other, you know, districts who are not part of Sisk are, are telling us, but, but much different what we've been, we'll see the past few years.
Yeah.
But from what you hear in the news, it's still not very high at all.
Exactly, yeah, correct.
And I think a slight clarification, we do have people in the district who are not full-time, who pay prorata, right?
Thank you for that clarification, yeah. So, very few, on the classified side, remember, there's no option, well, the only option is for the three employees who currently have the ACA bronze plan, the ACA qualifying bronze plan. District picks up forty, forty-five hundred, they pick up fifteen hundred, so it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split. Again, only three employees who qualify for that. Otherwise, any classified employee who has medical, district makes a full contribution. On the certificate side, we do a prorated, depending on the circumstance. If they're at the secondary level, it's just prorated period. If you teach four sections, we consider you eighty percent FTE, and so we have eighty percent of the cost benefits will contribute. At the elementary level, where there's the opportunity to team teach or to share, then those two teachers who are working together actually have the ability to come together and say, you know, one person sixty percent, one's forty, but hey, I don't really need the medical, because I'm able to be on with my spouse, so I'll just let you have the full medical. And so we allow that, that one fully turns, you know, turns it down, the other one gets the full medical. And sometimes they do that, and then the person who turned it down gets the dental vision, that sort of thing. So we do allow for an arrangement where people who are team teaching to enter a separate arrangement, otherwise it'd be prorated. Do you have any idea how many employees are prorated right now who are making a contribution? Yeah, I don't know, it's just, it's a, she'll pull it up.
You mentioned the retiree healthcare, and so I have a couple of questions, because I haven't actually looked at it recently in any of the contracts. But are we still offering it? Is it still an active program? And, and do we have any kind of Medicare? I know some plans require once you're sixty-five, you go onto Medicare either as sole or as primary. So, so where are we in that?
Yeah, so this is, I think, you know, again, something that really warrants celebration. We have probably the best retirement plan for our employees across the county. It does term out at sixty-five, so once you're eligible for Medicare, you're no longer eligible to receive our retiree benefits. The basic requirements are that you've been with us for ten years, classified or certified, but worked for the district for ten years and be eligible to receive benefits at the time that you're retiring. So if you are a part-timer, if you're, you know, fifty percent classified employee and you were never receiving medical, you wouldn't get it just because you had been with us for ten years. You have to, you know, be in a position that qualifies for.
You have to pull your pension, you can't go to another district and then retire and pull our insurance.
So, correct. In practice, we've, we've never allowed someone, although, you know, pretty challenging for us to actually model that into the future, but we don't, we, the policy is that you must actually retire. But if you, you qualify at age fifty-five with having ten years of service force, so the greatest benefit could be, would be ten full years, fifty-five to sixty-five. If you retire at sixty, it'd only be for five years, you know, whatever portion takes you up to sixty-five. But it is a full employee or contribution. And while they actually do have a tiered rate structure, we will pick up the cost for whichever plan you qualify for and, and request. So some retirees actually have a more expensive plan, even though it's the same one, but a more expensive plan than our staff because they're able to do full family.
And I'm not pushing necessarily for degradation of the plans. Under a total compensation view, when our salaries are at the bottom, something needs to be at the top. So, I'm just asking.
Yeah, so I've, I have all the other districts in the county, their information. To my recollection, there's only one other district that has a full contribution, but they require a few more years of service, fifteen or twenty. There's a number of districts that require, typically they all require more than ten, but when they do offer something, it might only be a, you know, fifty percent share contribution. So it's not, not by any means null or nothing, there are many districts who have an example of.
Step vesting.
Exactly, exactly.
Do you, would you have any clue what the average, is it fifty percent? Like, the district's paying fifty percent and the employee is paying fifty, what's the, I mean, we're, we're paying a hundred percent.
I can look back on that as well.
I don't think it's.
I don't have it electronic, I have it on paper in my office.
She pulled back, she said, not worth your time.
No, I did.
Well, I'll still do it. I don't like not having an answer.
We're going to, therefore, we're going to pay for all your health.
And your children.
Appreciate it.
Another way, looking there at Oxnard, is they actually offer the benefits to their employees at five hours, so they have greater exposure. So, yes, they do have a co-pay, but.
Six hours.
Six, because it used to be five.
Six hours.
But one of you guys, but, so they do have a contribution, but they have more people in it where ours, you have to be six point six hours to do that. And then the bronze plan was offered here a couple of years ago at six. So they have a larger group participating because they have a lower hour, so their expense looks, than what we have, because we have a higher table to answer. Of course, I really appreciate what you said right there, but that's part of why we went with the two and a half percent, is to keep that, that package understanding and negotiations on the other costs that are associated. So the overall picture.
Let me also say that under, you know, I mean, as much as I, you know, I believe in compensating on both sides and fair total packages, the era of absolutely free insurance is rapidly coming to a close. And I, I think we're going to have to deal with that at some point, whether it's step vesting into retiree or the tiered rate that we only cover employee plus spouse plus one, or something like that. It, it, everything, every place I'm looking, especially if ACA gets killed, it, it's going to be tough, it's going to be really tough.
And, you know, not to add gloom to the picture, but, you know, this is, and I brought it up every now and then, this is that issue, this post-employment health benefit issue, is that, that sort of arguably ticking time bomb where we account for it on the. where we account for it on the basis of any given year's obligation, but it is a big old bubble up over our head, um, that reflects promises we've made to every single person that's currently in our district. And if we, you know, come to, uh, you know, years when we have outside, outsized numbers of retiring teachers who are under sixty-five, we're gonna be told by our superintendent that we've got some big old expenses that we didn't have the prior, prior year, right?
Yes, we're pays, you go.
Absolutely, it's unfunded, right?
As we go, yeah.
I'd hate to be called superintendent.
Refunding at all, right? No pre-funding at all, right?
Correct, that's correct.
On the classified side, it's, uh, I've always heard that story about retiring with the golden watch, and, and the history growing up. One of my first experiences here was our mechanic, who'd been here over thirty years, last three months after we retired. And I could go on with the list of classified employees that have made it maybe two years after retirement. I think certificated might be a little bit different, but classified-wise, there's very few people. I think Jim Moore's old might be the ideal, who spent so many years, thirty years in the district, started at his twenty-one years old. The exception to that balloon that you're talking about, classified side, we don't have a very long life, so.
Yeah, and it's, interestingly, too, um, the, this era we're still in of incredibly low interest rates could be really encouraging teachers, or not allowing teachers to really feel like they're comfortable retiring, uh, early. So we may, in the end, you know, you may find a number of teachers going on until they're sixty-five.
Well, with the new medicine, we're gonna live to be at least a hundred.
Well, so, the, the way it works now, it used to be, you had to, you have your years of service plus your age had to equal seventy-five, and then you got your maximum payout for your retirement. But that's not how it works anymore. Now you have to work until you're sixty-one or sixty-two, depending on when your birthday is, um, to get your maximum payout, plus your thirty years. So people can't, if they want, if you don't have, you know, other things that are paying into your retirement, or you don't have spouses, or, you know, if you're a single person, then it, um, you have to work until you're sixty-one or sixty-two, you just can't not. So it really has changed for the people who retired at fifty-five, those sort of, those years, when it was, you know, fifty-five plus thirty, it was seventy-five, and you're done, and things are great, but it's not like that anymore.
So the likelihood is that there's really only a three or four-year window of, all right, health insurance obligations after retirement.
Exactly, it's changed so much, unless, of course, someone has, you know, set themselves up really well, or their, their spouse has this amazing, you know, health insurance for, you know, for the family, or whatever. So really, it's only a few years, and most people I know are, they're looking at the sixty-one or sixty-two, because that's what you have to do.
So, so one of the words that I use a lot is dynamic, and I heard you talk about the transportation budget earlier, and this retirement kind of ties into that, is dynamic, cause I, in the grounds department, am part of the transportation budget, cause I have wheels on my lawn mower and tractor. So when you cut that.
And your tractor.
Oh, let's say, no, Chuck, that's not true, you're not part of transportation.
No, it has been, so that was part of the moving around when, uh, when, uh, we had to close budgets, make budgets work, that got closed. So that'd be great if it did, but we use it for three percent.
I made sure you weren't before I made the comment.
But like Andy said, the dynamic of retirement is not just a simple piece anymore, cause even with, uh, furs, they've gone up to sixty-two, anybody out there in twenty-twelve, hired after twenty-twelve, they go to sixty-two now, so the numbers have changed there.
I'm wondering, with that said, if there's a way to look at our school grounds and, um, shift what we do there, I mean, I know it's happened a lot already, um, but, you know, less grass, I, I don't know how you build that, but let's just say that. Less grass, more trees, or less grass, more bushes that catch water, that, you know, I mean, I feel like we need to be thinking about how we plant and what we do, to reduce the amount of, um, work that you have to do, so that your, your work is, um, not so spread out and more focused. Um, and then also, like, like at Topa, you know, you have where the, the garden is, and the water just slides right down that hill and, and goes right into the drains, and why is it that we don't have a squail there? And why have we not planted there to catch that water? Well, I mean, there's all these things that we could be doing, that I know that costs money, but I also think we could be thinking like that. Or like, again, at Topa, we have that huge playground, a way that, all that grass, or sort of grass, you know? And why is it that we don't, you know, cut that in half and put a, uh, an exercise, um, you know, one of those obstacle course things, or, you know, just think outside the box in, in terms of what we do, so that you're only mowing this much, which saves on gas, which saves on time, which saves on whatever, and then you have these other pods or places that are designed so that kids are going through that and exercising, or reading, or doing some other things out there. I mean, all of the schools have those yards that used to be all grass, but now aren't, I mean, to me, it's like, eh, we always think in the big numbers. We always think in the big numbers, but if you think in the little numbers, every little bit helps, and over time, all of that adds up, in my mind, so the less time you spend mowing, and the less watering we do to try and get the grass to grow, and, you know, it just, it just kind of keeps going, so the less time we spend on the gophers, it, there are money, we'll let you know each day, so.
Incorporate the gophers into the curriculum.
Quite a few of those, they're big enough to put name tags on them.
ADA.
Go for ADA.
So one of the small numbers that I kept thinking about, back to transportation again, which is, are, we still using that giant bus with the two kids who leave Topa and go to Metellaha for math, and the giant bus for the kids who go to Nordoff for math, coming back?
I don't know what buses they use.
They aren't providing transportation, I don't believe, from Metellaha to Nordoff.
For the math kids?
I knew a mom who had to, was responsible for getting the kids in, on certain days.
They did last year.
Yeah, I'm not sure what we're doing now, but we have been.
I think we have been, I know my kid had to walk, cause we couldn't make it work, so I just.
We'll check on that, that's a good, that's a good question. I know a number of years ago, we did.
But hopefully, it's a ban.
Well, I wonder why we don't at least use the small, newer, more economical, I, I can just remember pulling up to Topa, this giant bus with two kids. But maybe that's not.
I don't know, everyone can do it.
But that seems like a very small.
I think they use a small.
Do they use a small one?
At least, I'm pretty sure.
Can I just say, I think this is a fantastic conversation. This is the kind of thing we ought to have on a regular basis.
It'd be great if we had more public input.
You know, I talked to a person today, actually, the OEF function, who watches this on TV, so shout out to all those who are watching. I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't sure that anybody did, and so.
This time, we're not even aspiring.
Kathy, Kathy can give you a rendition of how live we are or not.
Are we? Are they live today?
We are not live, and the reason is that we, um, have to record to the camera, so that we can have dual English and Spanish recordings. And so then, as soon as the, um, YouTube video is, um, concluded tomorrow, finished tomorrow, David will send it over to the city. They reconfigure it, and then they start broadcasting.
Viewership, because we're not live.
You know, I, I am, uh, in, in, at least in one way, I'm a lot like our president, I really care about ratings.
Now, one person, now, one person has called me, now, one person has called me on Wednesday morning, after the.
How dare you!
I want that video now, not six hours from now.
But if they're home watching and we're discussing something, they can run over and say, wait, wait, wait.
Nor has that happened.
And if we run out and watch it, we can double our rating.
So the advantage, the advantage of not being live is you can always edit, no, we don't do that.
Edit out my comments, it's a wild game.
So, Gideon, I have one other thought, and, um, then you talked about it, that I, we, we're talking, again, it's a sort of outside-of-the-box concept, but you're, we're, we're all talking about where do we cut, where do we cut, where do we cut? But maybe at some point, we should try and think outside of the box, um, to, where can we bring money in? Like, how, how can we do that? And I, I don't know how we do that, like, I, I'm just saying, it would be nice to think of that, um, like, the ADA, the ADA for online learning is really interesting. And, um, and then how do you get that, how do you get that out there? Like, I mean, we have a lot of famous people who live in our area, so do you say, um, gosh, go to school with? You know, and then they come in and go, hi, blah, 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 right? They just, you know, they do a little two-minute blurb on whatever for, for, you know, it's like, we have to think like that. And, um, and maybe they're not willing to do that at all, but ma- maybe they are, they are.
I'll bet somebody's willing to do that.
Right, and maybe we do have parents or people in our community who say, I would, I went to public school, I would support it. So what can I do? It's five, a five-minute quick thing on your online feed for, uh, reading, or for track, or, you know, we have people, right? So why is it we don't, I know it's weird to ask people, but then at the same time, if you don't ask, you don't get. And, um, and so you put that out there in the world, and who wouldn't want to go to school with, I don't know, I don't, I don't pay attention.
Scott Baio.
There you go, Scott Baio.
No, no, no one watching will even know who that is.
I'm saying, who are these people?
But, anyway, we just have horrible things that are in my eyes.
Really? That's why it was on my head.
You understand, that's why, it's little things where you, you simply, you simply, you just have a little bit, just a little thing out there that goes on the, you know, you have, somebody, you guys have a website? Somebody who says this, and somebody's flipping through, and they go, you know, oh my goodness, my child can go to school, you know, or see a, an online learning with this person? Gosh, I want him to do that, I mean, you never know what you're, I mean, it doesn't have to be movie stars, it can be, uh, famous attorneys, or, and, and there are famous attorneys, like, there are, there are people in our community who are known. Um, and why would we not say, teach a quick history lesson in, what?
Oh, we have Grammy winners, Academy Award winner, we have a lot of people around.
Right, or what, you, you rode down to LAX with some very famous person who'd been in.
So famous, she has no idea.
No, no, I got, I was taken, being taken out by Enterprise to the, uh, back to, you know, to Enterprise, down to the car, and we picked up this gentleman in the East End who was the Russian ambassador during the Nixon, during the Kennedy years, and he was the one who was personally assigned to Khrushchev when he came to visit back, way, way, way back when. He was at the.
That's what I'm talking about.
Powers trial, you, you won.
Sure, very, very hard.
He had the whole band of people, Enterprise fascinated by his discussions about, you know, and he was always saying, this is a guy who was some of the biggest moments in history that my generation can think of.
And I'll tell you, when I was on the OEF board, and I asked famous people to do stuff, the only reason they ever said no was scheduling.
Right.
And so.
But it's online, so it's not, you're not lying. I just, that's the kind of thing, I feel like we should all be thinking of, how do we bring money in? How, uh, how do you, how do you generate revenue instead of just cutting back? And how, how do we do that? And if you, to me, if you earmark it and say, well, we want, we need money for this, we need to make sure we have that, then we all focus on how do you bring the money in, and it could be little bits, or it could be big amounts, but if we're not thinking like that, then it just becomes this drudgery and horrible thing of, oh, we're gonna slash this, we're gonna slash that, instead of an inspired, creative process. And I think we're all inspired, creative people, so why would we not be doing that?
And I think.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, in the next fifteen minutes, I mean, that was one of the things, what are we not providing funding for sufficiently, or at all, that we, that we would like to see, perhaps?
I was gonna say, um, along with the ADA capture, one of the things that had been talked about was, um, making our elementary schools at least more magnet schools, which never had a lot of traction, but it's a conversation. You know, do we want to, I, I think, rather than magnet schools, it really goes to PR and advertising. And, you know, we have Miners Oaks, they've just won this amazing award, and all that they're doing there, are we advertising that? Do we have a great environmentalist, like, who used to live here, what's his name, from, uh, oh, the hospital show? Ed Begley Junior. Ed Begley Junior used to live there, I don't know that he does anymore, but, you know, the big environmentalist, you get him to, that kind of, I, I, I think that's what you're saying, yeah. But we, we highlight what our schools are doing to let people know.
Well, the year I did that, we brought fourteen kids into Topa Topa.
The year, with the kindergarten?
I highlighted, we focused on what do we do at Topa Topa kindergarten in Topa Topa, because we were panicked that, I was panicked that I was gonna.
You went and wrote or something like that, right? I mean, you went, you went out and did stuff.
Yeah, we went, we did it, we talked up and publicized, and, cause I thought I was gonna be moved, I thought, I don't wanna lose my kindergarten job. So I got out there and did it, and, uh, we got fourteen new students, and at that point, it, there was classes of twenty. So we went from fourteen, that's like zero, and one of the kindergarten teachers was moving, to all three of us getting to stay, and we had a whole, full class. Because people went, oh, you do that, you do this, oh, you do that, like, they were so surprised, they had no idea, so, you're right, you know?
So you got them from private school, you mean?
They weren't coming to public school, they were all new, right?
And where did you go to sponger language?
We held evenings, uh, evening information, like, you know, this is what we do at the schools, we put an ad in the Ohio Valley News, we, uh, I think we wrote something for the, we, we just worked it, I didn't wanna move.
Thanks.
So we put people's jobs on the line and not we motivated to, is what you're saying?
Well, I was, I, I am not gonna speak for anyone else, I would never wanna put somebody in that position.
Um, you, one question that, in terms of revenue generation, and I, and I know I've, I've seen, and you're unified, you know, they have a gargantuan adult ed program, and they don't wanna share, right, because they're, they're making money. What do we do in that area? And, and do we think that there is demand that we're not meeting, or, or, cause I haven't heard a lot about adult ed here.
How does the adult ed make money?
You charge the.
How's that work? Oh, okay.
You charge the attendees.
Oh, I see, that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, ESL is a big one, well, maybe not here, cause we don't seem to have a huge number of English-language learners, but if it's an adult-type thing, it's not limited to just the students, right? From what I understand, COBA is very popular, um, and I don't know, I, you know, there might be opportunities there, there might actually be earning opportunities for some of our folks, um, as well, right? Cause.
We used to have, we used to have classes from the college that were offered at night at Nordoff.
Yeah, well, the money goes to the college.
That's true.
So.
So we would have to.
We're actually having that issue at the college district, right? And, and right before I left LA, there was a big thing between the LA district and LA Unified, right? And the Unifieds typically don't wanna give up the, the adult ed money, um, or revenue. So, I, I, I mean, I, and I'm not an expert in the adult ed area, it just seems when the Unifieds have it, they seem to hold on to it really tightly, and I'm assuming there's a reason for that. Um, that there, there might be money available, I, I'm just not sure. The other thing, you mentioned something that, that I've been thinking about for a long time as well, and that's that magnet school idea. And even if it's not magnet per se, in a formal sense, um, you know, each of our schools is a little different, they all have their specialties, Miners Oaks being green, but it's also multilingual.
Right.
Um, and now with, uh, you know, permissive bilingual education, returning to California, if I had a kid, given the, given the contemporary world, and I had an. If I had a kid given the, given the contemporary world, and I had an opportunity to send my kid to a school where he or she was going to come out multilingual? It's a no-brainer. It's an absolute no-brainer. Um, so I, I still would like us to think about that in terms of curricular as well as, as, as focus.
I'd love to see bilingual programs across the.
Yeah, we talked about that during the, you know, closure. I think that's a great idea, too. I thought Miners Oaks might be a good.
It'd be a great place to start. It's a very enthusiastic community.
I mean, I think, I think we, there's probably a delta between, you know, it's possible as between somebody who might go to Sunset versus coming to us. But obviously, given how remote we are, I think it's probably, you know, there's limits to how much we're going to be able to attract somebody from Ventura, for example, who's going to drive all the way up to Ojai because there's a magnet school here.
You're right, but, but Oakview.
Oakview, yeah. Oh, that's the battle, there's a battle going on there. I mean, they're, they're very aggressive at Sunset, you know, they're putting ads, speaking of ads. Sunset is putting ads in our local paper here.
They're, they want to keep those kids.
Yeah, I saw Kelsey recently and, yeah.
To Ojai.
Yeah.
But when, we'll put our own ad.
Yeah.
And it'll be colored.
Yes.
Or, you know what we should do? We should put an ad for them, we'll put an ad for them, but we'll misspell it.
Is that disinformation?
K O M two Sunset. Right. Something I graduated and it's all this.
Well, so here's an idea, too. I mean, this is, I know this is, uh, totally not what we're thinking of, but, so we have Summit, we have Summit School. And what I, what if it was a K eight school? I, I know that's crazy, but what if it was a K eight school? And what if there are parents, if we're drawing kids from other, like, districts like San Antonio or, uh, Santa Paula? What if there are parents who would love to send their child to a K eight school instead of a middle school in Santa Paula? I don't know what schools are like that. I'm done, not, that's not a, I'm not saying anything about Santa Paula schools. I'm just saying, parents might like that. There, you know, you never, you never know until you put a survey out and say, would you be interested? I mean, there are parents, there might be parents here who say, I would be very interested in a K eight school. That Matilah has overwhelming to me. Or, I, I know that's, I, I know it's kind of crazy, but I also think you got to start with crazy and then come back, you know? And, um, and what if it was an environmental-focused school? Look at where it's at. What if it was a, a farm school that was a K eight school? And we said there were buddies and there was this and there was that and, you know, who knows what would happen? I mean, that's the magnet school idea where you draw people, you might draw people from all over. People might be willing to send, I'd send my child to that school.
In a very loving and positive way, there's not a better valley for crazy.
Well, we have a, we have a school like Summit that's a K through eight, and I have a focus school has a theme or something like that, like your school does. Then, I don't know how you work this out, of course, if it seems you can. Then you have like the Berkeley idea, the integrated, polar modeling, inverted, integrated curriculum starting at age, you know, the first age. By the time they get to eight, they are capable of so much more in terms of what they're doing because they build upon an integrated curriculum all the way through. Have you ever seen that model of the, uh, Berkeley College Institutes, uh, integrated thing? It's really quite lovely. And, uh, in any event, with that kind of school, you could, you could have put some numbers off the charts in terms of student development when you were to have that kind of integration and sell it on that basis. Uh, and that's just an idea.
I actually think that's really interesting, that the one thing that I learned, I want to refute a lot of people, actually, but the thing that surprised me most that I learned out of the 7-Eleven discussions was listening to the Summit folks talk about the classes. Because to me, combo classes always had sort of a thing of it's a compromise, it's, it's an awkward thing. And when I heard them talking about how, in fact, it actually sounded better when they started to talk about the younger folks have older models, the older kids have, you know, sort of custodial or responsible roles. And there's a lot of, because I just went to a bad place, right? I'm a young kid in a room full of old kids, I go back to my own history, right? And, and, you know, I'm just going to get bullied and intimidated, and that's not what I heard at all. Actually, what I heard was something that was unique and interesting. And again, it goes back to what you're saying in terms of getting our message out there that, even if it's not a K eight, right? I mean, Summit is a really interesting place where there are those relationships. It's a sort of a big brother, little brother, big sister, little sister kind of stuff. That's stuff you don't get in a typical elementary school, right? Your cadre, you stick with your cohort all the way through. Um, and so, again, and we don't talk about that. I mean, Summit is just combo because it's little.
Right.
But playing to the strengths.
Right.
It, 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 I, you just got me thinking when you said that about talking about what's unique about our individual schools. I don't think we actually sell the value of combo classes.
Right.
Uh, because I hadn't heard that until I heard the teachers talking. And that was a revelation to me.
And I, I went and visited this last fall, I went up there and visited, and I was, like, it was just so amazing to see everybody, everybody was working together and they're all in their groups and, you know, I, I think it takes a lot of support to do, to do that kind of work. It takes a lot of support.
But you're also forgetting that there's only 18 or 20 kids in the classroom.
Yes, yes. I, I, I totally agree.
It would be, you know.
Whole different story it goes. But if you were drawing kids in for a reason, again, you, you have to sell the concept with the idea that you're going to give it a chance to build. You know, maybe it's a service learning school, you know, maybe that's what the focus is or, you know, I just, I think you're not going to get it just by saying it's a K eight school. It's never going to happen. But you will get it if you say, like, you publicize, this is what we do, and this is what the focus is, and you may be able to get kids.
I think the first part of what you said, because I know at Sunset, they're a K eight because Trudy Ariaga said, we're losing all these kids to Ojai from Oakview, what can we do? And went and talked to the families in Oakview and said, what do you want? Rather than, here's what you want, come to us. It was, what do you want? I think that's a valuable conversation, especially at Summit to have.
That's what comp sales will tell you. Salespeople will tell you that the real job is not to sell your product. Your real product, your real job is to, you know, make a relationship with the customer, find what they want, and then explain how your product meets.
Exactly.
And, you know, you can't just push your product. You have to really get into, into the customer and say, what, what do you, what do you need? And find that out and get real, real terms.
And I think that would be valuable to hear from Upper Ojai, to hear what they would like. My concern is Matilah needs those students. And if we siphon off even more, the only way I can see it being a trade-off is if sixth grade moved up to Matilah and we had a K eight. But we, by, I, my fear would be for Matilah, that that would really, I feel like they need more students there than less.
Do those kids go to Matilah, though, or do they go back down to Santa Paula?
The ones that I know have go to Matilah.
Yeah, I, I know.
But I would, I, you know, that's just the ones that I know.
The ones I know also go to Matilah, or have in the last few years.
Yes, okay.
But, yeah, I mean, exactly.
Can I, can I add a comment?
Hmm?
I really appreciate the board having the Measure J committee and all the community input that's happened through that. And the idea of selling to the community. I'm thinking of Summit as the 4H program, because they talked about that at their whole community event. And we have all the acres up there that they constantly mow. With Andy's comment about the mowing, I mean, one of the things that, and Andy's done very good about having this, and Hank started it, with getting all this together is that I was, you know, one of the reasons for having health benefits is to keep people. And the turnover has been extreme in recent years, and it's costing the district. They don't get, realize it, and I'm sure that you will. Um, I see it in the 20 years that I've been here. But it's what I've seen for the community, what they want. And, um, one of the things with Measure J would be the redoing of the library is to maybe incorporate that into a small lecture hall that Nordoff doesn't have. But one time, we were looking at doing it in class sizes, and one way to do that was to have smaller groups, and then you have the whole apartment, like, like you would in college. And then all the room that they, Nordoff has was a band room. Well, Bill's not going to get that up, and the labor to tear that down and build it up is even realistic. So the idea of the library possibly being something for the community, whether it's adult ed, um, internet usage or something that's 60 groups or 70, whatever that number might be for the high school, that would allow to contribute to those, what might be large classrooms where they get together, they have a big lecture and then they break it down. With the Measure J money, this might be the time to look at that one room. Because libraries are changing and technologies change. And we've seen that as classified employees, what is a librarian, you're a tech person? What does that look like? Because to me, a librarian's keeping our assets and the technology person is actually applying it. And, and I know that there's a revision coming with, uh, the new year, uh, because technology's changing. And along that line, what if we use Measure J money to lease a piece of land for a cell tower and increase our own network? Marimani, big old piece of property, and we all know that Crotone Hill is a black spot for the ballot. So we put our own tower there and serve the whole ballot. Make it look like that tree of Caltrans over there at the Y, right? But, you know, Measure J money, it may come back as a long-term lease to the district. But as far as what the community wants, you know, the technology's what they want, and the adult ed would be a piece. If, I've often thought with this piece here with the tourism we have on the weekend, you could offer adult ed, like kaleidoscope then with the cobbles on the weekend. Right? And, and bring that money to the district using our properties as a separate entity, but you'd need the tech balance to support that. So, but I agree with what the community wants. Uh, that's one thing I see is that the community doesn't have a place to gather. Matilah is often too big for the function of apartments terribly. And we've got this Nordoff library situation, which might be able to tie it all together on a smaller basis.
Yeah, I just read an article about the evolution of libraries and, and de-emphasizing the books and, and having more technology, um, study, group study areas, student support areas, um, community gathering areas, all that kind of stuff. So it'd be interesting to see where we go with that, with the library, because I think you're right on track with that.
Well, there is another one, too, if you want to use Measure J money, and we can support Julia Nutrition Services and rebuild this kitchen over here at the Chaparral. Actually, put a bakery in there to supply what we used to have over here, and a bakery that used to be on Matilah Street. Have our students make a bakery and sell goods on the weekend right there at the Chaparral. We really got ambitious, we could take this, this program we have over at Chaparral, the restaurant business, and not just have waiters and waitresses, but actually have chefs and have a kitchen for them right there to make it and take it.
I love that idea.
Well, and rent a commercial kitchen. Um, there are a lot of people in the valley who I think would love to be able to get a few hours in a commercial kitchen.
And they're hard to find in the valley.
I keep teasing about the barbecue where we're going to play.
You know, another, as long as we're out of the box, a lot of airports are using goats and sheep for, uh, keeping the grass.
I was thinking that, too, up there. With the 4H?
Yeah. Of course, they, you know, just other end.
And I don't know what they do to gophers, but I imagine it would help. Maybe not the sheep, but the goats, I don't think gophers would appreciate it.
Well, and you know what? The, the idea about the large areas and grass and all that, one of the topics for, for Topa Topa School is all of the school is in the bottom of the hill. And so they deal with the flooding. Whereas when Smart Start came in and it's now CDR, they've got their building at the top. And so, I mean, they got the advantage.
Well, they come with Smart Start. Don't build the bottom, it's great. Rule number one to be smart.
Okay, I'm going to close it up unless there's a last minute discussion. We do have a quick closed session, like 10 or 15 minutes. We'll start it in about five minutes, but thank you, everyone, for coming and.
We have a second item on the agenda.
Oh, we do?
Public portion.
Oh, boy, I forgot about that. Can we take a two-minute break? Or I'll just disappear while you talk?
Go right ahead.
We can talk about goats and chumers some more. We have a.
We, we found that.
4.2.
Just 4.2, the actual.
You don't have to do that.
No, we don't have to, by any means.
Over.
No, you don't. Jane, you don't have to do the next one. The next, the next item, you can put it on for next Tuesday.
Absolutely.
No, no, okay.
We'll, we'll be here.
You'll let me know, right?
And those at home, you could have participated in this stimulating conversation if you had been.
Shouldn't we actually even, it would make sense anyway to have a closed session prior to 4.2, potentially?
All 4.2 is just talking about the scheduling, yeah, that's all.
But, but we have to come back anyway, right? After a closed session?
No.
Are we done?
No.
So is 4.2 public meetings or?
Yeah, 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 both, yeah, 4.2, both.
I've actually.
Are we just?
No.
There's nothing, there's, there's no imminent need to do it.
Okay.
But the, just to remind everybody, the second item was actually my, my coming off of your, your initiative. Just to be sure that regardless of what happens in smaller conversations with the city and any other legal and/or any legal constructs that apply to the potential lease, uh, that there be opportunities for the community to come and talk with us about how, what they would vision for the primary. Open-ended, I mean, you can, you can direct the conversation a bit by, you know, going to Andrew and say, this is what we'd like to have them talk about. Uh, but that's all that is. And so the reason it's action is because if you did it, if you came up with dates, then you would say, here are the dates. Okay. But you also don't have to do this tonight, right? And we don't, other than that very large agenda item we have on high school issues, right? There's nothing next Tuesday night that's a real big time, uh, agenda item.
Okay.
So maybe I'll think about that a little bit. And as Andy said, you know, you might feel a little differently depending on how the closed session conversation goes.
Is, um, uh, the, all the high school issues, do they include anything about the grading?
Grading? You mean A to G?
No.
No, no grading.
About, okay.
Nothing on grading? Uh, Eve, why don't you tell me what you?
Well, there's an issue, um, Jesse Keun wrote an article about it, where, um, the GPAs of students that are engaged in extracurriculars are being actually brought down by the extracurriculars. So that when they rank students, it's possible that a student is, is a higher-ranked student who's actually, does no better than the other person on, um, like AP, but doesn't do extracurriculars. And so the AP, so even if you get As on extracurriculars, if you do AP, you get higher than at 4.0.
Yeah, I have to go back and look at that, that article.
So the, the idea is.
Extracurriculars, what do you mean?
So, 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 so you get graded for the musical, you get graded for sports, you get graded, you get an A, you know, presumably, in like, doing, doing a sport, marching band.
But you only get four for that.
You get a four, you get five for other As. You get five for AP, so, so you're actually.
Anyway, that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
That, that'll take a little, a little time to sort through that.
In the public section, though, as long as we were discussing that.
Yeah.
If we haven't requested the, uh, report on the historic designation, we should request.
Did we do that? Didn't you, weren't you going to do that?
We did it Friday, but there was no one in the office.
Oh, they don't, because they're not there Friday. So we'll try to get.
We'll inquire again.
Okay, yeah. You mean that, that, you mean the one, that controversial report that?
Well, the, the report that may or may not exist, but it'll be.
No, it exists, because Bill said it does.
Right.
Okay, so, yeah.
But the Historical Commission never got it.
They are not aware of that.
Yeah, I was just not aware of it. We will get that, yes.
All right, so we are postponing the item 4.2, and now we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you.